To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors who wish to be heard? Carol and Matthew? All right, Carol, you'll start.
Yeah, I would like to speak as a member of Clinton Placemakers. And this year, we're having our International Food and Beer Festival on July 12th, and I hope everybody will come. It's free and it's a lot of fun. And everybody has had a great time. We've only done it two years, and this year is going to be even better. The issue we've run into this year is that we do not have a stage available. We have been borrowing Madison's stage for the last two years, and this year it is not available to us. So we are renting risers from Taylor Rental, which is, you know, marginally acceptable. And it's kind of a waste of money to spend money on something that goes back the next day. So I have had conversations with Todd Hayjack and Emily Cross from, who used to own St. Peter Park, about the old stage that Clinton has. Now, that's 30 years old, and it was given to us by Madison when they bought a new stage that cost an estimated $150,000. But the stage that the town owns is perfectly usable for the things that we would like it for, and there are numerous county agencies that would use the stage if we had one available. So the conversation I had with Todd was not very promising last week. Since then, there's been a conversation with this gentleman who owns a vehicle modification company in Clinton, and he thinks it's very doable to get that old stage up and running again. It's going to cost some money, and I know DPW does not have it in their budget. But this guy is feeling, he's had a lot of benefits from his association with county agencies, and he wants to give back. So he's offering to rehab this stage at nominal cost. And Emily has spoken with Todd today, and Todd thinks it's a great idea. We do have to have some money, however, to invest in this stage. We have to, you know, if there are parts that this fellow won't provide, we need them. The biggest problem that we have is we require some funds, and DPW is not interested in applying for funds. Placemakers is not interested in owning the stage. But we have a really good way of getting something that we already have back up and working and usable for the town. So I'm hoping that we can make an application for ARPA funding for somewhere between $10,000, $20,000 before the end of next week, because I know that's when the deadline is. I just don't know how to approach this. So I think what I'm here to ask for is if we could get together with you, Michelle, Emily and I, and maybe Todd, and talk about how we can get this together to provide the town with a really necessary item at little cost, very low cost, and have it be paid for by funds that are available in general. So I'm hoping that, Michelle, you might be available next week, but I'd like the council to think about how this would benefit many civic organizations in town if we had this stage available. I know the chamber would like to use it again and maybe available to people for a rental fee if some private organization wanted to use it. But I think it's a really worthy project.
Where is this?
Right now, it's parked up behind Public Works. And this guy is the kind of guy who gets J&amp;J or J&amp;J modifications or something. He makes monster trucks and stuff. He really knows what he's doing. And so if there were, if he, anyway, he seems to think there will be no problem getting this thing up, running, functioning, and at minimal cost to the town. So what I'm presenting to you is hopefully that you will look at this and support the idea as if we can figure out who actually applies for the funding if we can.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Matt?
Hi. Matt Kennedy. I'm the chairman of Water Pollution Control Commission, and I'm just here to speak as a member of the public today. It's my understanding that there's some people that have applied, submitted applications to be members of the Water Pollution Control Commission, and I just wanted to speak briefly about, you folks know what we do. We're a technical organization. We're project-driven. We've been a little low on membership, so I'm excited that people are applying to be part of the commission. This is very exciting. When the commission worked at its best a few years ago, it had very diverse voices, but diverse voices that were all, you know, willing to roll their sleeves up and work hard. You know, we're a twice-a-month commission, you know, hour or two each clip, usually two hours, you know? So it's a big commitment, and to have people be interested in that is exciting. But definitely looking for people who are, you know, and you can vet the people as you do, but people who are willing to, you know, just get behind what the town is doing, you know, and try to ask the critical questions, but, you know, be part of the process. I had the opportunity to meet Cheryl Falanga and Dave Carroll, both of who I previously met in my life, but they came to our WPCC meeting last week, and we didn't have a quorum that night. We typically vet this ahead of time and make sure, but one person wasn't able to make it for a very legitimate reason, and, you know, we didn't have a quorum. So what it did is it created the opportunity to let these two guys ask a lot of questions and also answer a lot of questions and also to question them. And a little bit I know from living here for 20 years and frankly knowing both of these guys for 20 years, since I have a 21-year-old daughter, so I've seen this guy a few times, is that these are two community-minded guys. There's a lot of good people who would probably want to serve on this commission, but community-minded people I have a soft spot for. Cheryl is a big volunteer in this town, both in a leader as well and kind of an outspoken voice, which is nice, and a good public speaker. So those are some things that I personally could use as a commissioner, looking for somebody on my commission. I could use those strengths. And I think he represents many voices that aren't often included in these conversations. So I, you know, I know of his public speaking work in a civic organization we were both part of at one time. I know he's part of the Town Democratic Committee. I know, you know, I've seen him at work with young kids and older adults, and I've seen how he works with them. And that's a big part of what the commission has ahead of us. We have big projects going on. We need to interface with the public more so than we have in probably three or four years, and having somebody with those qualities is super useful for me and I think a wonderful asset to the town. So that's what I have to say about Cheryl. Dave Carroll, what I know about Dave Carroll is what probably a lot of people do, because Dave Carroll's been around and we've all seen him and seen him at work for a bunch of years. So he came to our meeting, had a lot of questions. We had a lot of questions for him. His background as being a member of the Public Works and being a first responder with the Fire Department is, you know, goes, doesn't need introduction. But his background in construction, his background in just knowing how municipal projects work, to me, is extremely important, just as Cheryl's skills are extremely important. Having somebody with that quality can be seriously important. We had somebody with those skills years ago, a person passed away, but brought another voice, you know, a voice that's representative of people in town, you know, a different voice than mine, which is great, especially when we face the public, to have different voices. And also that experience and his temperament, you know, he just has a good temperament, people like Dave. But yeah, but those skills and a willingness to work hard and to impress that upon us as a commission when he came and met with us. And so that's essentially what I'm here to say, is I don't know how many people you have lined up, but these two people are people who I could absolutely work with and would look forward to it.
Thank you, Matt.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other visitors care to speak? Yes, Dylan.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Town Council. I'm Dylan Walter, President and Deputy Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, the Clinton Safety Commission, and as well as a slew of other things. I'm going to speak in favor of Sean Bach, who wasn't available to meet with the WPCC last week. He's a resident of Clinton for the last four and a half years and was really drawn here by the excitement and the potential in our town. He also lives in an area that's under review area where some improvements are needed in town to improve the health, safety, and quality of life for residents in that area. I think he'd be a very strong candidate to fill the seat on the Pollution Control Commission. He's concerned for the taxpayers, and I think he put active interest, the best interest of the town. I think he's a worthy candidate and is very familiar with budgeting in the private sector and can bring a rigorous eye to anything involved in the public sector as well.
Thank you. Thanks. Bob?
Robert Corser, Republican Town Committee Chairman. I got a few to speak on here. I apologize, but we had a lot of candidates. First one, I'd speak on behalf of Lawrence Pilcher, Board of Ed. He's filling a spot that recently vacated by Mike Horniak. His resume speaks for himself. You guys all have got a copy of it. Lawyer for 38 years, 28 years in-house lawyer of Connecticut Housing Association, CHFA, resident in town for over 38 years. And he's been to the meetings for the past year and a half, year. I truly believe he will fill Mike's shoes just as good as Mike did on that commission. So I really would like you to consider him for pointing to that. All right. Another one, sorry. All right, Donna, Zone Board of Appeals. All right, Donna Dunn. We all know Donna. She's worked, been a resident of this town forever. She's involved in a lot of stuff. She works with DPW. Been at Tompkins for approximately 25 years, 11 years as Assistant Director of Public Works. I can read the resume. You guys all have got it, but it's quite extensive, as you guys see. All right. I believe, our committee believes, and I believe that she fits that position perfectly. All right. And going on the WPCC position. We all know Dave. Everybody's spoken about Dave, so I don't think I need to speak on behalf of Dave. He's been a part of this community forever, and he does have the best interest of this town at his heart. I'm convinced, and our commission is convinced of that. Sean, nobody knows Sean, but I don't know if you guys got a little history behind him. He's got a 17-year career at Safety Zone Supply Source as Operations Manager. His proven skills to be able to work alongside those different views and personalities come to solutions for the greater benefit and good of our community. So he's worked in the industry that does a lot of support for towns statewide. All right, so I think he'll meet what both these gentlemen also do too, also. He's got a problem solving, working with people, because of what he does, obviously. They think, a lot of times, last-minute stuff they do, you know? So I believe he'll bring open minds and people's skills to that position, that commission. So I really would like you to consider him for that commission. Right now, it's, you know, I think it's right for the town. We even up the playing field. Right now, there's three Democrats, one Republican. All right, my point are two Republicans, I believe, would even the commission, because I'm sure they're all equally qualified, and I'll just give it a land-level playing field and will do what's right for Clinton. So please consider Sean and Dave for that commission also, please.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, on to item number four, and it is appointments and reappointments. So we'll begin with Lawrence Pilcher.
We got to approve the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Item number three. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 5th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now, item number four, appointments. We'll begin with Lawrence Pilcher, and he is wishing to be appointed to the Board of Education until November 2025. Lawrence, would you like to say something? Not that you need to, but if you'd like to, you're welcome to.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd first like to thank the Town Council for consideration of my appointment to the Board of Ed. If I am appointed, I can assure you that I will do my very best to be an excellent member of the Board of Education. I am totally devoted to the best possible education that our youngsters can get here in the town of Clinton. My two children went through the public school system here, kindergarten through 12th grade, and I just love the school system here. I think it's a really good school system, and I will do anything and everything that I can to try to do the best I can to make sure it continues to be an excellent school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Lawrence? No? All right. Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What would that motion be?
We appoint Lawrence Pilcher to Board of Education till a term of November 2025.
All right, is there a second? All right, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Lawrence.
Thank you. I'm aboard, Lawrence.
Number two is Donna Dunn, who would like to be appointed to the Board of Assessment Appeals until November 2025. Donna, would you like to speak? We got your resume and your letter. If you care to have anything to say, you may, but you don't need to.
No, I think I'm all set.
You're good?
Just hi. Well, you've got everything. It's me, you know me, so.
All right, so a motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Donna Dunn to the Board of Assessment of Appeals until November 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Donna. All right. Number three, is Fleming Gray here? Does Fleming Gray need to be here?
Is he on?
Probably. That's typically. Okay, all right, so we will put that off on to the next meeting. Next, we have Michelle Benavania to be appointed to, I think we can do both at the same time, Connecticut River Area Health District for a term until 6/1/2026, as well as the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, until the same date, presumably. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. All right, congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, and now we have reappointments. Is anybody, are you all right with, are doing all the reappointments together?
Yep.
Is that okay? All right. So we have Roy Sullivan, Republican, for the Fish and Game Constable until June 30th, 2026. We have Mark Giacconi, Republican, for Conservation Commission until June 30, 2026. Warren Best, Republican Harbor Commission until June 30, 2028. And James Smith, Republican Shellfish Commission until June 30, 2026, all presumably put up by the RTC. So is there a motion to reappoint?
I'll make a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to all those people who probably aren't here, so. All right, excellent. Five, the Chamber of Commerce. Is Paul Rosini here? Would you like to speak to this, Paul? You'd do so better than I would.
No, it's something we do every year. It's an exception to the non-alcohol policy for both the International Beer Festival, Beer and Food Festival that Carol alluded to earlier on Friday night, July 12th, and the Summer Fest and fireworks, which will cover only the Town Hall portion of it on Saturday, August 24th and 4th.
All right, great. So this would be a motion to, for the exemption request to Ordinance 194-4A, 194-5A, for both dates, July 12th, 2024, and August 24th, 2024. All right, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. All right, great. Thank you, Paul. Number six, the Ship Grant Application. Abby, would you care to speak to that?
Good evening. So this is a request. I'm here on behalf of the Harbor Management Commission, and they are looking to apply for a grant of up to $150,000 for the Small Harbor Improvement Project Program funded to the Connecticut Port of Europe. The idea behind this project, it's a planning-focused grant, so it's 100% reimbursable, but it does require an outlay if the grant is awarded, and then obviously 100% of those costs will come back to the town. The concept here is sort of alluded to in the existing harbor management plan and in some of the documents in our POCD to tie to both economic development and support of water-dependent uses. So the idea being a bookended concept within the public improvement area of the town arena. So behind and between the Dockmaster's Office and the boat launch, there is an open basin of water that was previously contemplated for potential small dinghy slips and that kind of stuff, would have needed to be dredged out. The approval process from deep was unlikely to come for that level of excavation, but we still have a scenario in which we need to protect that bank from further erosion into that water body and also have an opportunity to improve public access to the water. So the idea behind there is an accessible platform that can be used and connected to existing land-based pieces. So some of the concessions area is, you know, tied into parking, allowing folks to either, you know, walk, wheel, whatever capacity they can, onto an accessible platform that can be used for a couple of purposes. One, simply viewing and being part of the harbor. There are some educational components to this in terms of understanding what species are in and around the harbor and those types of things, as well as a potential erosion control project to place some strategically positioned reef balls to both give people an understanding of what those coastal features might look like, that people can come down and see firsthand, but also to provide some protective elements for that one piece of bank for which we need some additional stabilization. So it's really a multifaceted kind of thing. The platform, again, provides people access to the water, but some of those underpinnings of it and the reef ball concept could allow for some of that erosion mitigation as we sort of face some of our climate challenges. So that's one side. As we continue along, the other bookend of this project would be Esposito Beach, and we know that there's been some challenges there. You know, it has sand in some capacity today, but there's no material contributing to that feature. And it's also a spot where folks have had some challenges with kayak launching. We know it's popular, but we also know that it is, you know, there's rocks in the way as, depending on tide, it could be kind of a difficult place to navigate. And so the concept on that end is to create an accessible kayak launch, which would be sort of part of our kayak network around town with our raps at Town Beach and the Casper Landing. So really to sort of try to tie in this kayak trail concept in an accessible format. So a lot of what we're trying to do is really improve the accessibility of water-dependent uses. Part of that will also involve, you know, what happens on the land-based side of that. So we have untreated stormwater that's directly flowing into the harbor, so we may be able to get some more quality improvements designed and also take a look at those, sort of the seeding area and the trees that are there. There, you know, certainly there's, as time goes on, the health of those trees is going to be in question. Some of that parking area is starting to be uprooted a little bit with the pavement being affected by roots and those kinds of things. So we have an opportunity here to design the next phase of what this bookended public improvement could look like, but from, like I said, accessibility, water-dependent uses, public education, there's really a whole bunch of things that can improve this, this harbor front area. So the commission is asking for the council's endorsement and approval to make this grant application. The deadline is July 1st, hence the meeting tonight, and my understanding from our Finance Director is that once and if the grant is awarded, we would come back for the appropriation and the final amount that was awarded and go through that process at that point. If there's any questions, I'd have to be answered.
Abby, is it 100%? If we get the grants, 100% paid back, correct?
Correct. The planning phase is. Now, that doesn't say anything about future construction phases, but at least the idea here is that we would get in projects as close to shovel-ready as we can't be able to make application in the future.
So the town would pay the 150, and then we'd be reimbursed?
Correct.
Yep, okay. And the vision for Esposito Beach, you mentioned like the rocks and whatnot were in the way of creating an accessible thing right now. Is there, because it's a little gem of a beach. You could just use a little cleanup down there. So is like the remediation of the beach part of that general plan?
I think that, so that's going to be a conversation with deep, and that's part of what this process will do, is provide us the funds to work with a consultant to see what is possible in terms of sediment deposition, kind of how we preserve sand over time, what that means in terms of the context of rising seas and storms, and sort of how we mitigate the tendency right now for that to, that area to sort of have material pull out and erode. And without having contributing material, that's always going to be a battle there. So I think the idea is how do we preserve the best and most accessible public access we can at that point, recognizing just the environmental challenges of maintaining a beach in perpetuity at that location. What does that mean? And so that's what this is, would help us answer.
Chris, anything?
No.
Dennis?
Well, where would we grab this $150,000 from? The town. We got to put it up.
We don't, it's only if the grant's awarded, correct? So our ability tonight is just to allow you to apply for the grant July 1st, before July 1st, correct?
Yes, yes.
Not allocate the money.
Okay. All right, I misunderstood.
But there would be an expectation that if it were awarded and we have the approval to award, we would be coming.
Well, that gives us time. I mean, you know, I hate these two-week deadlines where, you know, the grant comes in this week and next, you know? But that's fine, okay. Then answer my question, then.
Okay. So any other questions?
Yeah, no, I understand. That's good.
Do we all have this motion? Would anyone like to make it?
I'll make it. So moved that we, well, there's a motion here.
Yeah. Chris has it for you.
You read it. You got it with you?
Hang on, I'm dialing it up.
Yeah, there we go, yeah. Ship Grant Motion. I move to authorize the Harbor Management Commission to submit, well, the Town Council moves to authorize the Harbor Management Commission to submit an application in the amount of $150,000 to the Small Harbor Improvements Projects Program, otherwise known as SHIP, for a reimbursable grant for planning and design work in support of improved public access to the harbor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, and number seven is the Finance Director's Report. And Bob is here this evening.
Good evening. You should have the report in front of you with a narrative similar to last month, but obviously we're a month into it. Starting on page one, we have a revenue analysis. Actual general fund revenues are forecasted to be 2.1 million, overestimates at fiscal year-end, which will result in the actual use of fund balance of close to 1.2 million. Now, that's on the revenue side. So whereby we budgeted 3.3 million use of fund balance, on the revenue side, we're actually using about 1.2 million. The major revenue drivers were supplemental motor vehicle taxes, they were plus 161,000. Prior year taxes were plus 135,000. taxes were plus 135,000. Now, keep in mind, and I think I mentioned this last time, when you're looking at this revenue report, anything in brackets is a positive thing. In other words, revenues were over, is just the way the report comes out. If you see a positive balance, we're under in revenues. Education cost sharing grant was plus 239,000, municipal sharing grant, 333,000, and investment income is, was over 902,000. Starting on page two is the expansion analysis. I did a more detailed analysis than last time. General Fund Expansion Budgets expected to be over budget, I'm sorry, under budget by $750,000. There are several salary line items that are over budget due to vacation sick leave payouts because of separations, union contract settlements not budgeted for due to timing, and these budget shortfalls will be covered by other various salary line items that do have funds in them because of open positions and our contingency account. I mentioned here, and as I did last time, departments with salary line items projected to be over, and then there are departments with salary line items that will be under budget. Page 10 is our investment report. Again, it's taken time, you know, to get all these bank accounts and investment accounts into new names now, but I do plan to transfer some funds from Bank of America to stiff account to take advantage of the higher interest on, which should have a significant impact on the budget. Page 11, American Rescue Plan Funds, not much changed from the last time. It is color-coded, and we are in the process of identifying line items that will have amounts left over, so we can quickly come back to you and repurpose those items. So to be sure that we've obligated all the funds by December 31st, we obviously don't want to hand back anything. So we're continuously looking at that. We've had some meetings, and the next report will be able to give you an idea of, well, propose some repurposes. Page 21, General Fund Fund Balance. This incorporates not only the revenue side but the expenditure side. The general fund balance will decrease by 1.1 billion billion to the new fiscal year, and the decrease is due to 2023 estimated expenditures, overestimated revenues of 439,000, plus a change in use of fund balance between the two fiscal years of 723,000. Right, I don't know if you have any questions on the, on page 21, but we should, that, that, page 21, oh, why didn't you update pages today? Sorry. What page is that? That is page, that's from the old report, that's page, I'm sorry, 12. So we, the start of the fiscal year, the total fund balance was 21.2 million. I'm estimating that the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year will be 20.8. Our goal is 50% of the total budget, it's 9.6, so we do have a ways to go. But like I said, when you decrease in fund balance, it's always wise to decrease a step at a time. Contingency account, the balance is 255,000. 150,000 of that balance will be used tonight for transfer requests relating to those overages in the salary accounts for the most part. There is one typo there, the plus 28,000 requested tonight. I said the thermal camera, obviously that was on my mind, but it's not the thermal calendar, it's the IT security request for the 28,000. So if approved, the contingency balance will go down to 76,000. Page 13 through 16 is, for the most part, I guess, informational, but I'm also requesting your approval, and basically involves, page 13 shows you the existing departments of other general government and general government administration. I'm requesting that we make some changes to that. If you look at the items under those departments, they're pretty hodgepodge, and they belong in other areas. If you look on page 14, that's my recommendation, where we put those line items, so on page 14, the proposal is to put those line items basically where they belong. So for instance, under Town Manager, I'm proposing the Town Council, or the legal fees go under that department, and the annual town report. I'm proposing that we create a new department called Insurance, and we put two line items there that relate to insurance, and proposing a new department called Commissions and Committees, and there are six line items relating to commissions and committees. Public Works, there are five line items that belong in Public Works. Hazards Waste, they run that program. Tree Ward, Electricity, Heat and Hot Water, they control the buildings, and Piercing Costs. Under Finance, I'm proposing auditing services and bank fees, and you can see the other recommendations. Another new department would be Transit District, Professional Organizations, and typically, when you look at other towns, you'll see that the contingency accounts in its own department, because we look at that the most, or a lot, and it's nice to see it there on its own. On page 15 is another proposal relating to reclassifying Debt Service Department, Education, and Capital Improvement Departments. You can see on page 15 the existing, basically where there's a line item for every single bond issue. I've seen that 20, 25 years ago. It's a little bit too much as far as I'm concerned. So if you look on page 16, the proposal reduces those accounts. Under Debt Service, you have one bond principal, one bond interest, band interest, and lease payments line item. If anybody wants to see the detail of Debt Service, it'll be in our new budget document, which would have all detail backing up this. And the example, let's see, I have an example of that. And something similar to this page would be the new budget document outlining all the debt service issues that we have in the annual payment settlement. Under Education, there should be one line item, Education, and that one line item will match the total in the Education's budget proposal. And under Other Financing Uses, we'll have the Capital Improvements, Municipal Capital Improvements Board of Ed, and any other funds that are authorized will be transferred out. As an example, on the, on the table over here, you're welcome to take one on the way out. It, it shows what our legal budget notice that we, that we've just done would look like if we incorporate these new accounts. It simplifies it, makes it easier to read, and I have one for each one of you if you want to. I have basically the, the one that was issued and a new proposed. And I think that's, that's the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
So I have one question, Bob. The, like, if rolling all the bonding accounts into one general bond account, with each bonding resolution, as something goes out for a bonding resolution, do you think, you know, I'm not a financial accountant, but do you think there's a reason that they're specific to accountants, those account lines based on a resolution and the particular wording in the resolution?
No, no. When we have a bonding resolution, we get a, you know, a debt service schedule that gets added onto the detail sheet. No, not that it does.
I got a question, Bob. First of all, again, just to say it again, I love this. It's, you know, it's very clear. I like it. I got to give credit to Hank on this. I was trying to look through and see, but Hank told me that the 1.4 million for the sidewalks was erroneously put into the capital budget. Is that true? And that we, instead of the 20%?
He discussed that on the resolution, which kind of refers to it. You know, maybe erroneously is not the right word, but yes, it, we can talk about it. The resolution relates to it.
Talk about later.
And that actually relates to the question on the $150,000 grant about the funding. So it's the same type of, we can go over that.
Okay. Looks much cleaner this way.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Is everybody in favor of, do you like what you see and?
Yeah, I like it.
Mike?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, I mean, if it's easier for him to, I think he likes dealing it with it this way. I mean.
Okay. Everybody again?
Expenses, the revenues, they're all there.
Okay. All right, Bob, it looks like the proposal is a go.
Thank you.
All right. All right, were there any other questions for Bob? No? Okay. All right, so on to number eight, the line item transfer requests. We are going to need, before we make that line item request for the library, to make a motion to approve the work. Isn't that correct? Mike and Dennis, you were talking about it before the meeting?
The question was, there's a proposal for A and E work for the library, right, the library project, that in the process of going through it, that they're requesting to have the existing equipment reviewed and have it analyzed by architect and engineer. So knowing that if something's going to have to get replaced, or that would be the time to do it during the construction phase. So the proposal, I believe, was 6,000 something?
6,500?
Yeah, 6,500, and then I got a notification too that somewhere along the line, the architects get a 10% sort of, for being an architect, I guess. So anyways, it'll actually come up an additional $6,500 to be added to the original 6,500. That, 6,500, it was 6,500, it was what the architect said it was going to cost, but then you add on to 10%, which is $650. So it comes out.
Okay.
Over 7,000.
I guess my only question, sorry. I guess my only question is why, like, why did it come as a line item transfer when we didn't even have a discussion about it? Like, I guess something came out, we got that thing, we got that within our, you know, within the email.
I guess the point is that we do need to discuss it before we make that line item transfer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think a line item transfer comes to the council and says, hey, transfer this money, let's be done. We didn't know any of this. Like, this should have been discussed on what we received. I mean, I don't think anybody has an issue with it, but it's just a policy, I think, or procedure, that we should get that information so that we can discuss it. So if people have questions, we can have a question asked before we then just do a line item transfer.
Right.
Like, this wasn't even part of the package.
So the background on this, from what I understand, and you could tell me the background because you're on the Library Building Committee, this was a suggestion by Mike Neff?
Right. It was suggested, and as Mike showed, brought up, is that it's something that probably should be done, because if you're going to renovate a portion of a building or do any type of, yeah, renovations, that first of all, you should also take a look at all the mechanicals in the building. It makes sense to study. So the reasoning is there. My, I have a lot of questions here. What is this line item transfer that we're even approving? Because this is all, I guess, what line item was this in before, that we're transferring money in or out of or doing?
Is this, is this a line item transfer, or is this a proposal, a new request for funding for this?
Yeah, because this is not a line item transfer as far as I know, because first of all, we don't handle the library's money, all right?
They want it half and half.
They, you know, they, we give them a budget, and they do what they want with it. All I know is this, you know, this was, we're in proposal stages of this whole building committee. We've never made a finite decision that we were going to go forward with this. We've never allocated money. There's no line item to put money or out of, as far as I know. We, we, they came originally, I believe, with the 28,000 for the proposal that they wanted half of architectural fees, which was 28,000, and we gave them 14, and they chipped in 14. Now they're coming back and asking that for another 6,500, well, actually, it's now over 6,500, 70, whatever it is, add the 6 there, I can't do that real quick, you do that for something. But anyways, what I'm trying to say is, they're coming here to ask the town to spend that. Again, like we approved the 28 before, 14, 14. This time, from what I understand, I don't know, is Mayor Beth here?
Yes, she is.
Wonderful. Mayor Beth can answer a whole bunch of questions. Did you go to your board, Mayor Beth, and get approval for half?
Yes, we did, yes.
Oh, please, Mayor Beth, as my guest, we were.
Well, actually, I prefer Paul as the chairperson of our building committee.
I thought the arrangement was we were going to split it.
Correct.
So that's what we're asking for.
But this is new. This is coming through a line item request.
This is new. We don't know anything about the second item, we're just asking to split it.
Bob, you, you put, you presented this request for this line item. How did we get to this point without the proposal?
Right. So this, this is just a line item transfer from an account that has funds available to the library line item. So it just, once it's there, it just stays there.
It's not costing more money, it's just moving money from one bucket to another.
Right. Now, this library line item is the line item you talked about, where we budget funds for the library and it goes to them.
Right.
Right? So right now, there's zero funds, and this just puts that small amount into that line item, and it stays there until it's approved.
Okay, my, my question is, we didn't do any of this fooling around when we did the $14,000 for the $28,000 architect. We never did that.
I think what he's trying to say is that.
They came and asked and said, it's going to cost us $28,000 to do an architectural study. Would the town put up 14,000? We sat in the night and said, we agree to give the library $14,000 towards their architectural study.
Yes.
And you took it out of, I believe, contingency, 14,000, and then went to them. So I guess my question is, if now they're coming back and saying to us, we need, what's the, what's the whole total now, Paul?
3575.
How much?
3575.
Right. They need 3575 from us to give to them, because they're going to match it with 3575, and go forward with this mechanical study. I, I don't understand all of a sudden where these, there's a line item here, and it's being line item requested. There is no line item for the library as far as I know, construction.
I guess it was just Bob's way of finding the money to give it to the library.
Okay, so I guess the issue becomes then we're putting that before anything else. So the issue was when the library, when we needed money upfront, they came to us and they said, we'd like to do this project, you guys, can you split it? We'll do 50/50. Everybody was in agreement. We talked about it, we knew it.
Right.
Next meeting we made, and we took care of the line item transfer, that we were going to apply this half of 14, or whatever it was. So this time around, we don't get any of that. We just got, here, here's a line item transfer without any explanation, without, I mean, Mike Neff, if it was his idea, would have loved to say here from Mike Neff, hey, this is why we're doing it? Okay, great, no problem. So like, it's like, I guess maybe just how it all came about, like, I guess, you know.
I think, I think, you know, I agree with you, Chris. It was like, all right, this is not the way we've done it in the past. But I, you know, on the other hand, it's already written out for us, so we have the right right now to not vote for it. So if we agree, it's already done, and we're sort of one step ahead. If we don't agree, we just. If we don't agree, we just deny it.
But you're setting a precedent about how we're going about doing these things. We're setting a precedent where somebody can just go to the finance director and say, I'd like to do a line item transfer. I mean, were you aware of this?
So in reviewing this that Bob went over with me, I didn't know the history, I didn't know that the proposal didn't go through. However, in looking at it, Bob, when you, on the actual transfer form, for the town side, it says, decrease account economic development part-time. So there is funds coming from a non-library affiliated account.
Correct.
Or a construction account. It's, it's decreasing the economic development funds.
That's great. So we have a line item from, that has funds available, requesting a transfer to a line item called library. And that library line item, basically, when their projects don't, we issue them a check, just like we would to fund their budget.
I don't think anybody's, I mean, I don't think.
This isn't an issue of the line. From the first, because the first one, we took from contingency.
Well, I don't think this is, this is something that, the line item transfer can happen, it's going to happen. I think the thing that I struggle with, and I'm not going to vote against it, I mean, we know what we're going to do, we're going to move forward with it, we're going to do that, but I just, I guess I'm losing sight of the fact of how this is coming about, and I understand we can vote it down and whatever, but that's not what we've done. So why don't we stick to what we've done, and have the process that we've put in place so that we're aware of what's going on, that everybody involved in making that decision knows what's going on? Like, now we're sitting here, we're basically saying, oh, let's just throw it out there and let's see what happens. And instead of saying, hey, listen, why don't we do what we've done in the past, which is like, if, if things need to change, or we're looking to do projects like this, let's go about the same process. Bring them in, let's talk, let's have a conversation. This is what we'd like to do. I mean, we, the letter's not even part of our package that we get from the engineering company, and I don't think it's an issue of them getting the money. They're getting the money. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote no, but I just, I struggle with the process of it all, and why we have to even talk about this, you know, like, it's an issue. Like, we're talking about it like it's an issue. And the issue shouldn't be here, it should just be, hey, listen, if something, we want to do something in town, let's just go through the same procedures we've done in the past. And it's not going to delay anything, it's not going to slow anything down. I mean, so that's just my feeling of it. I mean, and then the money, where it's coming from, it is, it's coming out of another account where we've put money. Right? We put money in economic development, so we have money there. So how do we go about taking it and, you know, well, we're just going to take it from them?
Okay, so I guess, that's my question. Why are we doing different, taking this money now all of a sudden out of an existing account, economic development or something, whereas before, we just took it out of contingency? It was, which is an account that you use for all that. I, we, we didn't take it out of another economic development, right?
So are you.
This is for the fiscal year ending in like, two weeks, right? So it's removing it from the economic development part-time person, who doesn't exist.
Why did we start that process?
So you're saying that a step was missed?
Really, all I would think is they got to do is that we have to go into contingency and just give them half of the 73, whatever it is that it is, our share, which will be $4,075, out of our contingency, and give it to them, and they're going to match it with their, and off they go, just like we did the last time with the architectural fees. I don't understand all of a sudden, we're dipping into an economic development line item that we never dipped into before. We didn't dip into any line item before.
So we need to.
We went to contingency, which is there for contingencies. So I don't understand. This is a new process.
We need to make sure that everyone's up to speed on the proper policies and procedures for getting a proposal, making requests to have line items moved, funds moved from different line items, and make sure that we do it in the proper order moving forward.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and do we want to go backwards and take that step, or?
I mean, is this number accurate?
This is a, the number seems to be accurate, yes.
But I mean, they're saying it's more now, it's 10% more, I don't know.
This is, take that number into account.
This is accurate, 37, 37.75.
I think that's accurate.
We can move forward with it, but I'm just, you know.
3575.
That's a number, Paul?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That is a number. Are we able to move forward with this, or does the breaking of the precedent bother you?
I think, you know, I think Chris's point's valid, we won't do this again in the future. We could act on it today, especially with the fact that the fiscal year ends in two weeks, and this money's not going to be used because we don't have a part-time economic development.
I'll be with that.
Yeah.
So is, first, we would need a motion to do the work?
Yes, and you can, you can change it and take it out of contingency. I mean, the change wouldn't have any bottom line effect on the budget, and, and basically, we're not going to take it out of contingency, we're going to transfer an appropriation from contingency to the library account.
I understand where you're coming from, because you're trying not to touch the contingency, because something else might come out, so you found money someplace else. I understand that. But that was a different process, Bob, is all I'm trying to bring out from before.
Right, and that's not why we're making a big deal.
Yeah, that's no problem.
The point, yeah, the point has been made. So first, a motion to do the work. Do I have a motion to approve the library building mechanicals prior to construction?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries.
So I just want to add to, for procedure, any proposal for work to be done comes to the town manager's office first. So this missed that step as well. So let's make sure that we review that, and, and then we would have avoided this in the future.
Okay. So the next line item transfer request is for the technology department to provide multi-layered.
Whoa, 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 we got to do this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Let's, let's approve the amount. Sorry about that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Can you clarify where it's coming from?
Yes, sure, of course I will. Go right ahead.
I can, to approve the transfer funds request, 3575, to increase the library account and decrease economic development part-time, 3575.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussions, sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. So that is done. So on to the next line item transfer request, which is in the technology department. You all have that? All right, so we're looking for a motion to provide multi-layered PC desktop protection. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, the next request is for civil preparedness, and that is a transfer for $2,100 into general supply. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Great. Let's see, we have another for the assessor's office, and that is a transfer of $700 into office equipment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, discussion? Question, Chris?
No, I get, where's the, like, $700?
Yeah, it doesn't tell us where it comes from, I noticed, but it goes into office equipment. Bob, do you?
Just weird.
Okay. We just have that part blank.
Yeah, when I was asked that question, Mary, what was that? You had asked me, and I.
Yes, because it wasn't listed on, on your form.
And I did end up putting a description in there, but I can't remember what it was. It's from the same department.
I'd have to look in here anymore.
Do you, do you need that for the motion?
No.
Okay, all right, so motion for 700?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. So that does it for the line item transfer request. And now we go to item number 10, and that is a resolution authorizing the per.
Yeah, no, year-end? We do year-end?
Oh, year-end budget request, yeah.
Yes. Bob, may we ask you to speak to that, the 409,000?
Yes, typically, year-end budget transfers occur during July and August, when most of the invoices come in, but these transfers involve mainly salary accounts that, like I said in the report, that related to union contracts, probably should have been, you know, when we come to you to approve the union contract, we probably should also give you a transfer request to cover the union raises in there. So this is, this is basically just getting out some transfers that would probably come to you July and August, just to make things neater. As you can see, almost 80% of it relates to salary accounts. 8% legal debt service relates to the boat lease that you approved, but there was no appropriation with, with that approval, so we're doing that now. The accounts that it's coming from, 150,000 from contingency, we've had savings in electricity, heating, water. There was human services, open positions, so we had monies in that account. And then in fringe benefits, we have some major savings because of the timing in, in the budget process whereby, under the state retirement contributions for pension, it was budgeted at 19.57% of salary. In June, the state revised that to 15.85%, so that represented major, major savings that we couldn't incorporate into the budget. For health insurance, there was a contingency amount of 200,000 included in the health insurance contribution calculation. Typically, there is a contingency, because when you have employees leaving and they're single, then you have an employee that's married, that's a significant change in medical benefits, you know, from 15 to whatever a family is, 35,000. So there always is a contingency. This year, we're lucky, the contingency wasn't used.
Any questions? No? All right, so we have a motion for 409,733 dollars as a year-end transfer request. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number 10, and that is the resolution authorizing the purchase of fire department thermal imaging cameras. I don't see Brian here, but Bob, would you like to speak to it?
So there's an explanation there. I think during the budget process, the fire department had 12 thermal imaging cameras in their CIP over five years. I think in, in this upcoming fiscal year 24, 25, they had four, and it was reduced to two. The reason why they're requesting 100,000 now, in addition to the two that was approved, is because these thermal imaging cameras that they have are actually not being continued, and the fire department does obviously prepare that their, prefer that their equipment is standardized. So they have these thermal imaging cameras, the specific model, they train on it, and they have a chance to purchase four, 12 at once before they can no longer do that. And, and that ceases, I think, first week in July. So they thought it would be an opportunity to keep the standardization and, and request for all these cameras at the same time. Obviously, this would reduce the five-year CIP, those, those items would come off the five-year CIP.
So I, I don't know, you probably won't know the answers to these questions, Bob, but, you know, when I, when I read this a couple times, I was wondering, how many do they have now? You know, because it doesn't seem to me to make a lot of sense to buy 12 cameras that are going out of, you know, circulation. So to me, I don't know what, I don't know, I'm not an expert in this, but, you know, would it make more sense to change direction and buy new ones that are state-of-the-art, that are, you know, coming up, coming of age and have all the technology, instead of going and buying a whole bunch of them that are going out of circulation?
Yeah, and I, I had, I wish they were here tonight, and obviously, they'll be able to answer it specifically. I was under the impression that they did have a significant amount of them, and these last, last 12 would replace some that needed replacing.
Dave, do you have any idea how many they have? A lot of them?
I can't speak on behalf of the department, but I can tell you they're definitely necessary, because to train every member to run a different machine is just like learning a new computer. It's not, it's not simple.
So do you know, do you have like, 20 of them? 10 of them?
That's a huge job.
Yeah.
But it's definitely necessary.
Yeah, my concern was along the same lines of Chris. Again, I don't know anything about thermal imaging cameras, but I do know technology gets discontinued, they stop updating and improving those, like firmware upgrades or whatever, that I assume goes along with something like a thermal imaging camera, and if we buy those now, are they going to be obsolete in three, four years?
We're in the same place. I know Brian couldn't make it tonight, he had emergency. We had this, we're faced with the same issue in Guilford. There are the MSA 6,000 cameras they're discontinuing, the technology and the chips are changing, there's not a good replacement out there, and we're standardized across the fleet, we have probably a good 14 to 15 thermal imaging cameras. So I think the intent of what he's trying to do is stick with the same camera. They will support them, so we're doing the same thing. We have three cameras, we moved them up in our capital improvement to maintain standardization until the next generation comes out. So I can't speak to the number of cameras that they have for that replacement plan, but again, buying anything in one setting is tough, because then you're going to have to replace that however many years down the road. But knowing that the technology's changing and the chips are changing, we use the same exact camera, and it's.
What's the, what's the shelf life of one of these things?
The thermal imaging camera, probably 10 years, so.
As long as the technology doesn't wear out.
Does, but they, so part of the deal is, is buying one of these cameras now, that they're going to support it for the next five to seven years. So they're keeping all the parts and pieces to keep them, yeah, they are, they are discontinuing that camera, and some of this big business changes, the way they're doing things, but the camera itself is, it's our primary camera for thermal imaging. So that's helpful. Thank you. I'm going to bring it up.
So the second part of that is what I asked before, like, what happened here? You know, it, it looks like Carl had 100% of the sidewalk project in, and now we're saying we only need it 20%?
Right. When a grant is awarded and accepted by the town council, if there's a town match, an appropriation and source for the town match should also accompany the, the acceptance by the town council. So the town match in this instance was $280,000. So the town council did not have to approve 1.4 million in general fund, funds, just the 280. Now, I think it was appropriate to approve that total CIP amount in next year's budget, because it, for the most part, matches your use of fund balance, and we know that the use of fund balance up in the revenues, it really needs to have an offsetting capital appropriation. So when that fund balance is finally used, you'll have an account to eliminate capital, right? Because we're not going to eliminate operating funds in the budget when we finally use our fund balance. So that's okay, it's just that approving a specific project, the sidewalk project for 1.4 million, wasn't the thing to do. So currently, $280,000 of that 1.4 is appropriate, and the rest of the amount is, is available capital funds for, for the future. So it could still be transferred to the capital fund, and we can have an account court undesigned it, and, and it's there for the council's use.
So if we use this a hundred thousand, we still have seven hundred thousand dollars to use for other things?
That's correct. For instance, we do have communications project, I think in two weeks, a final amount will be available, and there's a possibility that these funds could be used for that if the town council wishes. So the interesting question was, you know, with the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, it's the same thing. Where are the funds? Right? So the illustration here, as soon as the council approves a grant that's awarded to the town, I can go onto a grant fund and record an estimated revenue in the revenue line item and appropriation in the expenditure line item. So the very first page is what we've done. On top is the revenues, and you'll see there's a line item for state grant for one point one-two-oh, and there's a line item for transfers in from the general fund, which you approved, which is part of that one point four million. Nice and neat, one point four million in revenues. Down below are the expenditures, and for now, we're not quite sure, but we put a hundred and fifty thousand for professional services and one point two-five for capital outlay for this sidewalk program. Everything's set up, appropriations are approved. So the question is, now, this is a reimbursement grant. So the question is, how do you spend money? Typically, you don't have to wait for the grant to spend. The second page, even though it's a little bit of an accounting, but I try to make it as simple as possible, there are ways in municipal accounting, or even corporate accounting, to spend grant funds before those funds become available. You've approved appropriation, we've got an approved revenue source, we just haven't received it. Just like corporations, we're on a accrual basis of accounting. We have accounts receivable, we have accounts payable. So the very first transaction, I'm assuming we expended two hundred thousand on this one point four million dollar sidewalk project. How do we account for that? Well, in the general fund, we're going to pay for that invoice of two hundred thousand. So on the left-hand side, you could see an indent and cash for two hundred thousand. And at the same time, we're going to record due from grant fund. So the general fund's saying, hey, we've just paid a two hundred thousand dollar invoice for the sidewalk project, grant fund, you owe us two hundred thousand. That's recorded in the general fund. At the same time, I go to the grant fund, I record the capital outlay, the expense, and I record due to general fund, two hundred thousand. So that's an accounts payable account. All right? Now, notice in the box, in the general fund box, this transaction does not use fund balance. All right? So we're not using fund balance, we're just borrowing cash from the general fund, and it's appropriately recorded. At the same time, in the grant fund, you could see that we're also recording grants receivable at the same time, because as soon as you spend a grant that's reimbursable, we record federal grants receivable on the books. The auditors make sure we do that. If we don't do it during the year, we have to do it at fiscal year end. And at the same time, we're recording the grant revenue. So we record the grant revenue, but we haven't received cash, we've recorded a receivable. All right? The second transaction illustration is, after reporting the grant expense to the feds, the grant reimbursement is received by the town. So what do I do? General fund, they record the cash receipt, two hundred thousand. At the same time, they eliminate due from grant fund because they've just received the money. In the grant fund, we eliminate due to general fund because the general fund just deposited the grant money, and we eliminate grants receivable because the grant's received. So there is a way, and it's used all the time, you do not have to wait for grant funds to spend them. As long as we have an award, which is signed by the grant agency, which assures us if we follow the grant regulations, that we're going to receive the grant. So in this case, the one point four million did not have to be appropriated in the budget. No harm done.
How much money is this in the general fund? Do you have enough money to spend one point four million?
Well, we have a fund balance of, right? And look, fund balance doesn't necessarily mean cash, does it? Right? But we do have adequate money to... Now, this type of grant, it's one point four million, you spend two hundred thousand, you send the invoice, you get reimbursed, so it goes in layers. It's not like we're spending a million requesting it.
So you're taking it out of the unfunded balance?
We should probably get back to the motion.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think we just need to discuss, part of the motion is where we're getting the money from.
Yeah.
So as a town, we allocated one point four for sidewalks. That money has to be spent. We pay for the sidewalks to be completed. So the town has to pay one point four million to do that project. When the project is complete, we'll be reimbursed by the state. Okay? So at that point, this money that's out there, the reimbursable money, that's not coming, we have a sidewalk project that's going on for years now. We still don't have that money back. So the concern is that that is still an outlay for the town. That one point four million to build those sidewalks, that's an outlay for the town. I understand that the accounting part of it, and what number goes into what box, but for us as a town, that money gets spent. We have to pay for the complete project.
Right.
So one point four, we're going to have a contract, we're going to get into this, we have to pay it, the grant is saying that it's an eighty-twenty grant, then we'll have to pay the twenty. But we're not going to get any money back for years and years and years. So my concern is, we're approving this by taking some of that money. I just have an issue with us taking money out of something that we've already allocated for something else. So I know that they need to do it, things need to get done, but we're paying that one point four million. That's just hard money that we're paying to get a project done. When the project is completed, it's cleared, it's done, everything's done, the state will refund us twenty percent. But that's an unknown. So we need that money.
Right. We've done it with bridge projects. I don't think we've appropriated money from taxes for bridges, and bridges take a long time, I think.
Everything takes a long time. I mean, I get it, we're doing it, I mean, it all depends where the money's coming from, and I understand, but if it's, we're using the grant money to, we've been approved for the grant, but that doesn't mean that we have that money. We're not going to get money back from the state for years and years and years, because once the project is complete, we get refunded. We still have an outlay of one point four million to do this project. That's what the town needs to pay to get those sidewalks done. So we need that money allocated. We need that money to stay in place, to be allocated for that project, because that's what we approved as a council, that we want the sidewalks done, we allocated the money, that's why the motion was made that we allocate it, and set that money aside. We know that that project's paid for. That's accountable money. And then the refund that we'll get years down the road, but, I mean, you can't play with, I mean, I just don't think that's good policy to play around with money that we've already allocated for something else, assuming we're going to get a refund down the road, because that's going to be years out. We can't even determine when we're going to get that back.
I did double-check with the auditors today, and the way I described is a typical way that it happened.
And I'm not fighting that. That's counting. Accounting is different from the money that the town has to pay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, financial statement procedures typically.
Listen, I'm not getting it, I'm not a CPA. I'm not going to get into that part of it.
When it comes to the approval of money, we don't want to pull from an existing capital outlay that we've already approved for one point four.
Correct.
I think the idea is that we'll pull from somewhere else if appropriate, if the project is to go forward. If it's not appropriate, then...
I think we need to look at where that money will come from, in order to do this, if we go forward.
I think the component, like, you know, I like what you were saying, but then Chris brings up a good point of, we might not get paid back for years. So I sort of was asking, like, all right, you know, sort of the same question, where is this money coming from? If we have twenty million in unfunded balance, so we can take that money out, and we're sort of using a credit card to pay it until we get paid back, but if we don't get paid back for four or five years, you know, we got that money extended for a long time, so...
I can certainly report back on how quick those funds come in. I mean, I've heard that the project would take four years, just completing it. My experience with these construction funds is that you apply for the grants partially. It's not that you wait to the end of the project and you get the whole amount back. You know, the bridge funds, which are eighty-twenty, I've looked through our accounts, and we've received those funds over time as those invoices are spent. So there is a way to submit as you're going through the process. I can certainly find out on this particular project how it would work.
Yeah.
I mean, again, that's still, I mean, this is still money that the council's approved to allocate. We allocated one point four million. So now we're going to go back and we're going to say, oh, we want to change it, because we're going to take some out of that, that we've already allocated. I don't know. That's what I struggle with. Accounting thing is different than, let's see how quickly we can make money back. The fact is, is if we want to do the sidewalks, we wanted to do the grant, we wanted to get the project done, we allocated the money, then we go forward with that project, we pay the one point four million, we get our twenty percent back whenever the project is complete. And I think that's, you know, I mean, if we have to do this and they need it done because it's a timing issue, then I think we have to look at something else. I think Michelle may be involved in having that discussion.
Yep. We have to find another account. You have to decide if you're going to move forward with the thermal imaging cameras and approve the hundred thousand dollars. We will find another source for the hundred thousand dollars and then have to present to you a request for a transfer. But due to the time constraints with this, we are kind of...
I agree. I mean, I want to move forward with it. I mean, that's not the thing. I struggle with it.
I feel more comfortable that when Michelle...
Do we need to make a motion? We would need to know where that money's coming from. Is that correct?
You don't need to? Okay.
Well, we make a motion to look...
Dennis?
You have to do a transfer, though. You're going to have to do a transfer from...
We don't want to do the transfer tonight, though. We can make a motion to approve the purchase of those.
Okay. Then he can, as long as he can purchase it by the end of the month.
Find out that, right?
Then he can do a transfer for a hundred thousand.
Then we can do a transfer, find out where we may be able to get some of the money, wherever we need to be.
So we're approving the purchase ultimately.
That's it. Not the allocation of where the funds are going to come from.
Right. That can be after, so we can approve the purchase, they can proceed to make that purchase within the time restraints of this, of June thirtieth, and then the council can come back and approve the hundred thousand dollars from wherever you feel or the books show that they can take it from or transfer from.
Typically, you need an appropriation, permission to spend.
Correct. But we're making an appropriation for a purchase, not where the money's coming from.
All right. So the step that we missed in the...
We're reading that they need these...
Right. So the order can be placed, and we have time, we have time until that invoice comes due to make the appropriate transfer.
So that would be the next meeting?
That would be the next meeting, but they've approved the purchase. You're taking a formal...
We could use ARPA money. It's money that hasn't been allocated that we have left in ARPA.
Right. And Bob and I are working on that as well.
We can look at ARPA, we can look at contingency, you're right. I feel more comfortable that way.
All right. So I'll make the motion then to approve the purchase of, the fire department had twelve thermal imaging cameras in their, for the purchase of thermal imaging cameras. Twelve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? I think we did. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. Motion carries.
Good.
All right. Let's see where we are. The next is item number eleven, resolution authorizing access and authorized signer on OPEB account. And you all have that, correct? Would somebody be so kind as to make a motion?
I'll read it.
Go right ahead.
Chris can read it.
Resolution authorizing Robert Tate, Finance Director, and Ricky Philangia, Assistant Finance Director, access to the Charles Schwab Retirement Center website and the authorized signer list for the Town of Clinton OBEB account with Charles Schwab Trust Bank.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Onto number twelve, the chairman's report. I am looking forward to our town manager's report, and so I cede the floor to you, Michelle.
Thank you. So good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for giving me this opportunity to be your town manager. I am very excited. I am in day eight, and I've hit the ground running. I spent a good part of last week meeting with the police department, Parks and Recs, Fire Department, the Board of Ed, Senior Connection, and the Chair of the EDC, and held a department head meeting with all of our department heads. And I'm visiting the library tomorrow, so you have amazing department heads and employees, and I'm looking forward to working with all of them. I am also working with the clerks of the boards and commissions to start attending their monthly meetings and introduce myself to them. On Friday, June fourteenth, I attended the Westbrook Elks Club for their annual Flag Day ceremony. It was a longstanding, it's a longstanding tradition honoring the American flag and celebrating its history, and featured patriotic music. It was a very touching and informative ceremony. In attendance were local veterans, the emblem club, and community leaders. It was, I was very proud to represent the Town of Clinton. Tomorrow, I am joining Congressman Courtney aboard the dredging vessel that will be doing work in the Clinton harbor. There will be a brief public information session at ten, and we will be taking the dredging vessel out to the harbor to see the dredging take place. I'm looking forward to that, and I know some of you will be joining us. There also was, I approved the RFP, which is going out for the two thousand twenty-five plan of conservation and development. Bids will be due by July eighteen, so that is out. And that's about it right now. It was a busy eight days.
Yeah, very much so, yeah.
But I'm very excited to be here.
All right. Thank you very much. Happy to have you. Any questions for Michelle? No? All right.
From the board.
Yep, welcome. Yeah. All right. So on to fourteen, council discussion. Does anybody have anything? Yes?
Now that we have a new town manager, we should set up a workshop for ourselves on the unassigned fund balance, so we could put some guardrails around that, so we have a common understanding of what it is, how much we spend, how we spend it, in what ways we do that. And with the ARPA deadline of people submitting applications, I think that was the end of this month, it would be good for the council to have another ARPA workshop, so we could figure out where all of those excess funds are going. And my last one, I am currently the liaison to the Inland Wetlands Committee. I no longer have the capacity to do that, so if anybody else would like to take that position, it's open and ready for anyone.
Nope. You said you're in charge.
Yeah.
You sank it.
We'll find somebody.
Listen, listen.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
When you're not here, you get appointed. Heck, it is.
I'm sure he doesn't miss another meeting now.
You're bad.
You're just lucky you're here.
I'm going to game.
Anyone else?
I'm going to game.
All right. Liaison reports?
Well, I haven't been to an Inland Wetlands meeting.
You already quit.
And, no, the last, the last planning and zoning meeting, there was council conflict for that, so I didn't attend that one either. So, no.
Okay.
I went to the Park and Red Commission meeting last night. So let me think, you know, for the projects, I don't know if you've walked around, the turf has turf on it, you know, it looks good, you know, they're on their way. You know, if you go through there, you can see there's like, you know, there's big packages of stuff. I don't know exactly what they're doing, but I think it's probably going to be done before August fifteenth, that's when the field's closed until. But the Clinton use soccer is also thinking of replacing the benches with like covering over the top of them that are really old, which would be great. So they're not going to open it up early until they're sure that it's all done. Pickleball, they, it's all, if you go there, it's all sanded up now and basically demolished. They had to move the retaining wall up a little bit, and, you know, they're sort of moving around, they got to move the lights. The lights are like on the corners now, they got to move them this way, so they're in the middle of three courts. So that's going to be done pretty soon. The bleachers down at Peters have been demolished, and when they did demolish it, they found a lot more, the press box was a lot worse off than they thought. So while the bleachers are down, so that Dennis doesn't fall out of there, they're fixing that as much as they can with like, you know, not spending a lot of money, like painting it, you know, I don't know, doing some structural stuff to make it look a lot nicer. And the scoreboard's been ordered, so all that's ordered and on the way. And the basketball court down at the beach has had to be modified, I think I already reported on that, but given the porous structure and the closeness to the wetland, they couldn't do a full basketball court, so they're doing like a half court. It's turned into like a playland, where they're keeping the bocce court, it's like a little half court thing, and then a smaller little court for little kids.
So the beach house?
Beach house. Also, we saw the plans last night, they're all drawn up. Beach house, also, we saw the plans last night, they're all drawn up, I, you know, they mentioned they're working with Abby, so they have to, they're going to apply for a variance, and Abby's giving them some questions that they have to answer in order to get the variance, so that they don't want to put it up like 12 feet in the air, or whatever, I don't know the numbers, but if they put it up too high, then they have to do a ramp that goes around and around and around. So if they keep it low, then they don't have to do such a big ramp, and so that's the variance, they need to get that approved before they move to the next step. But as long as everything goes well and they get approved for everything, they should be able to be under contract well before the end of the year.
Who do they have to get that approval from, Chris?
ZBA.
Yeah. There's ZBA?
That's who does it.
Deep or Rafima?
You're going to get deep approval.
I don't, you want to talk about that? I don't know all the details.
The zoning regulations contain the FEMA requirements within them, and so the variance that would need to be requested would be to some of the FEMA standards regarding elevation. So they're doing the design right now to put all the mechanicals elevated above the base blood elevation by at least one foot, and make that standard so that the building is as resilient as it can be, and still be accessible to the public in a reasonable fashion. So that's the application that they'll be putting together to bring to the Zone Board of Appeals for their consideration.
And also, so the budget amendment up in Hartford actually also gave another $250,000 to that project.
Yep.
So that that was approved under the budget adjuster at the end of this last session, so there is going to be another $250,000 coming for that.
That's good, because it's probably going to be...
It's going to be more than that.
Right.
Thank you, Abby. Any other liaison reports?
Police Department last week, everything's wrapping up for the end of the year, they're right on course. Major concern, I guess, the other day is we had, at the last police meeting, I guess, in the neighborhood of about eight to 10 residents of the town, some that live on Liberty Street now, and of course, the shore people, that are very concerned about the speeding and whatever's going on here in town, and the disregard, the total disregard of all kinds of traffic violations. In other words, what I'm trying to say is, we have young people, or supposedly young people, I haven't seen them, so I got to say supposedly, but people are riding bicycles and stuff, doing wheelies in the middle of Liberty Street, causing traffic, traffic hazards. There's people running the stop signs, coming down from Long Hill Road onto Liberty Street. I guess, most of the people lived right on Liberty Street, close to that bridge, the railroad bridge, and now it's very popular for people to get a good roll of steam and catch air, as the saying is going, so they brought all these complaints to the police department, or concerns, to the police department, they realize that the police are doing the best job that they can, you know, and the chief and the traffic commission there and the police commission, they'll certainly look into and try to get some ideas to just how we can control all this. I mean, you certainly can't, you know how it is, I mean, if you put three or four policemen there stationed there, yeah, everybody's good. Soon as they leave, goodbye, you know? So, it is a concern, of course, Shore Road, as we know, down by the water there, you know, that's a very narrow road down there, and again, that speed limit is down, I guess it's supposed to be 15 or 20 miles an hour going along that stretch, and people are zipping down to there, 40, 45, again, reported by the people living down there. So, that was a major concern, really, of the, of the night, and a lot of discussion about that from the residents, and hopefully they're trying to figure out, you know, their immediate remedy is, everybody thinks you can just put speed bumps all over town. Well, you know, it's really not practical to be putting speed bumps down, you know, every 50 yards in Liberty Street, whatever. I mean, you know, Public Works and everybody, so it's a concern, and the police department is taking it, you know, to heart, they'll do the best they can, and they'll try to get back to those residents and see what, what possibly we can do, but, you know, I guess, and speaking to the camera now, I mean, it's us, the residents, the town people. We have to, we have to just start, you know, slowing down, and you can't blame the summer people, you can't, you know, you just, we all have to slow down, and start obeying the laws, the stop signs, stop at them, and whatever, and slow down, and pay attention to those speed limits, and, you know, act as a community. We talk about all kinds of good stuff about, you know, we're giving them beaches and everything like, like that, and we're trying to do our best to get them sidewalks, and, but then the residents got to do their part, too.
Yep.
They got to cooperate with us, and, you know, start to obey the law, I guess is what I'm trying to say. That's the end of that speech.
Okay.
Night, you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so now we're down to the executive session on personnel, and we would like to invite Michelle Benevenya, Mary Scatino, Sean Bach, Chiro Falanga, and Dave Carroll. But we'll ask Dave Carroll, Sean Bach, and Chiro Falanga to wait outside for just a moment, and we'll call you in one at a time.
Get him to the bathroom.
Thank you very much. So, item number 17, is there a motion to make a Water Pollution Control Commission appointment?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, both June.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Carroll to the Water Pollution Control with a end date of June 2027.
Is there a second?
Twenty twenty...
Go ahead.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. Motion carries for Dave Carroll to be appointed on the Water Commission until June 2027. Is there a motion for the next appointment, the second appointment?
I'll make a motion for Sean Bach to, for an appointment to the Water Pollution Control for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Yes.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, so four approve, one abstaining. All right. The next item is in, to approve the ratification of a Director of Human Services.
So...
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Motion's in tonight, you know, you're clean.
All in favor?
I'm on the record.
All in favor?
Aye.
The new guy's going to be.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, good night, thank you very much.